Good evening and welcome to the Wareham School Committee meeting. Today is May 9th, 2018. Can't hear.
I can't hear you.
Okay. The meeting is being recorded and broadcast by WCTV and an audio recording is being made by Mrs. Ruiz. First, let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, I'd like to recognize the passing of two teachers from Wareham High School. The first one is Ilda Starkey. She was a business teacher at the high school and filled many other roles as well, having retired in 1995. And also Howard Jackson was an industrial arts teacher where he taught for more than 30 years before retiring in 1991. Both teachers at the high school while I was there. So if we could have a moment of silence, please. And the first item on our agenda tonight is the recognition of school personnel. So I'll turn it over to the superintendent.
Thank you. I would like to invite the administrators to come forward as you will be introducing your members who will be recognized. And we will start first with Deccus, and I would like to invite the school committee to please join me in the front.
Well, thank you, school committee, for inviting me here tonight to recognize two staff members, one of which is here and one of which is not, that I'd like to speak to. One is William Fofford-Bill, who is celebrating 20 years in our district as custodian. This past weekend, this is a brave man. He cleans, he does everything, but not only that, is that he went skydiving this weekend. So, you know, he's very adventurous and he shares all the time his stories of adventure on the weekends, but he is such a dedicated. And if you've ever walked through Deccus School, you'd never know it began in 1968 because our school is so clean, neat. And I'll tell you, because of Bill Fofford and that team, so thank you, Bill, if you're out there. Next recognition, I'd like to have tonight is Mr. Bowyer. Mr. Bowyer, can you come up, please?
The year was 1978. That is the year Mr. B., as we call him here at Deccus, began his career at Wareham Public Schools. I was three. And I'm not getting any younger, Mr. B. He began as a music teacher here at the high school and then an instrumentalist in the elementary school. And then he became Title I, which we have worked with, with reading specialists and getting to the core academics and really touching base with all of our students and meeting their needs individually for many, many years. He's been at Ethel Hammond School. He's been at East Wareham School. He's been at Minnet School. And he's been at Deccus for the past nine years.
And West Wareham.
Oh, need I not mention West Wareham? So, from the high school to Deccus School, Mr. B. has touched many, many lives, and we are so thankful for your dedication of 40 years to Wareham Public Schools. Thank you so much.
I have a few to recognize tonight as well. Lori Morris, is she here yet? Come on up, Lori. Don't have to wear your hair up or hairnets tonight, that's nice. So Lori is one of our cafeteria workers. She's retiring at the end of this year. She has been in Wareham for 20 years. She has demonstrated passion and dedication among serving the meals all these years. I've had the pleasure of working her for the last several at Minnet Forest. So I asked Mr. Shaheen a few things because he couldn't be here this evening, and he said he's watched the children as they've come through the lunch line, and he has seen great positive reactions from the kids as she fills their hearts with joy and their bellies with food. So congratulations, Lori, on your retirement. We will miss you.
Ravine, come on up. banquet as well, so congratulations for that. So Nancy has her master's degree. She started her education career in Vermont. She worked at a parochial school. She started in kindergarten. And pay attention to this, Dr. Shaverhood, she was a bingo caller to raise funds for fundraisers. So Nancy is retiring, so she has some time on her hands. We can call upon those skills if we need it. From Vermont, she moved to New Hampshire where she taught third grade. She was there for 12 years. She also taught intramurals, and she was a coach for elementary softball and baseball.
Basketball.
Basketball, sorry. Basketball. She moved to Massachusetts with her husband and taught third grade at Deccus, then went to fourth grade, then we reconfigured, and I had the pleasure of working with her at Minnet Forest for these last several years in fourth grade. She also participated in Jump Rope for Heart, and this year she participated in the Emergency Responders Day that we held one Saturday, Cold Fall Day. And now that she's retiring, she gets to be grandma to her six grandchildren, and she's looking forward to that. But she did say when I asked her about tonight that she would miss the students of Wareham. So thank you very much for your service, and I will miss you too. So we are recognizing Laura tonight for 20 years in Wareham. She's been a teacher here. She started as an intervention teacher, then she became a special education inclusion teacher, which she was special in for several years. She's worked pre-K to 3 in her years here. She worked at East, at West, at Hammond. So we have a theme tonight of many of our veterans working in multiple buildings. At Minnet, as I said, she was special education, grades one through five. She has worked in regular education as a grade-three teacher for the past few years at Minnet. She's been on a lot of committees over the years, lots of curriculum committees, First Steps Literacy, MCAS ALT. She would always volunteer to pilot some of our programs, so many technology pilots way back when, when we first were getting iPads, she was willing to pilot that, that strange concept, the NOOCs that we had. Edwin, remember that?
Still there.
Still there, but she was one of the people that helped us with that. Global education has been another one of her passions. She has hosted several foreign exchange students over the years. She's part of the global education team. We do International Night at Minnet Forest every year, and she offered to facilitate that over the last few years, which is coming up on May 17th at 5:30. Get that plug in there. She took part in some training in California. She went to China and taught over there for two weeks. So she has a lot of work that she's been doing with global ed. She was on our strategic planning committee. For the school building project that we have, she was part of the visioning committee that we have, which has been wonderful. PTA member, she's helped me on interview committees. She really has gone above and beyond. For the past few years, she also has taught professional development in Wareham with her cultural competency. She's done many videos with students, which Christian helped out, so thank you, Christian, for that over the years. Music boosters, math literacy nights, she's done it all. She's really been committed to Wareham, she's been committed to the families, to the students. As you walk up into Minnet, you'll see the beautiful flowers that she helped us to plant. She maintains that, so our school always looks beautiful. She also, in her private life, has been a foster mom in respite care through DCF. And she'd come in in the morning and get a phone call in the middle of the night and would take students or children with her. Yet she was always there, bright and early with her students as well. She'll go after grants for book swaps and alternative seating for her students. So 20 years, I know there's a lot more to go, so I can't wait to see what the next 20 will be. So thank you, Laura, for your 20 years.
She started as a volunteer at Deccus. She worked at the high school with the Eden Start Program. She then became a part-time paraprofessional at the middle school and then became a full-time paraprofessional. I had the extreme pleasure of working with her at Minnet Forest. She was in our therapeutic learning center. Now she works in our upper learning center. She's volunteered her time during International Night over the years with her stepping students, and they have loved doing that. She's participated in the care program after school for several years. She makes those connections with kids. She brings true magic. I saved her for last because I know it would be hard. I'm going to miss her. Sorry. And we had one student who could never say her name the right way, and she has always been known and always will be known as "Bada Boom."
Pete. It is my distinct pleasure to recognize Sally Snyder for 20 years of service. Sally, come on down. Hi, Sally. So, those of you who don't know, Sally is our social studies teacher in our Humanities Academy, and she helps bring social studies to life for our kids. And what she does so, so well is she makes that connection between the arts and social studies. And so sometimes when you're walking into your classroom, you have to think twice sometimes. Is this social studies? Is this history? Is this creative dramatics? Is this art? And the items that the students make are truly remarkable. If you ever have an opportunity to walk through our school, you will see her students' work on display in the cabinets, but also I would encourage you to look up, because what Sally started last year is that she started this amazing ceiling tile project with her kids where they would put their heart and soul into inspirational quotes in these ceiling tiles. And they're not only beautiful to look at, but they're also really inspirational. When sometimes we have difficult days, we just look up and they line our ceiling. So we want to thank you for that. And also, she's extraordinary in terms of allowing kids to understand the greater world beyond them. We took an MFA trip last year, and the kids got so much out of it because of the scavenger hunt that Sally Snyder made for the kids so they could navigate the halls of the MFA. And that's what you do, Sally. You bring that joy and that kind of creativity, and we are so thankful for everything you've done. The last thing I was going to say about Sally is that as you're walking through the hallways and you notice the beautiful bulletin boards that say Vikings Strong, and you think they're the most beautiful things you've seen, that's all Sally Snyder. And that she came in over the summer on her own time and made those bulletin boards. So for 20 years of service, Sally, congratulations.
I taught in New Hampshire and Virginia.
And she taught in New Hampshire and Virginia. Tom Johnson is not here, but I want to talk about him, too. Congratulations, Sally. Tom Johnson is not here. I don't believe he came in late. Tom Johnson should be recognized because he's been with us for 20 years, and Tom Johnson has extensive knowledge of history and social studies, but he also has a deep love for the liberal arts. He used to teach English here as well, and he really goes out of his way to make sure those personal connections are brought forth for students. For example, last year, we had the Vietnam Veterans Wall that was brought out on the track, and Tom Johnson reached out to local veterans to bring in those veterans to our students, to meet them, to make that personal connection, and that's what Tom does every day. So, Tom, this is to you, recognition of 20 years. Terri Courier, I also do not believe was able to make it today, but she's also, should be recognized for 20 years. Terri Courier, as a paraprofessional, works in our TLC program, and she is known not only for her tremendous amount of enthusiasm, but also her patience and her willingness to work with kids and really bring out the best in them on a daily basis. So congratulations, Terri. And the retirees, Linda Stewart, who is here. Linda, come on down. Linda is retiring after 13 years. Linda helps students solve problems. That's what she does. And she helps them think differently about their world and helps them navigate often complex problems. But Linda was a member of our STEAM Academy in grade seven, known for her high expectations, both academically and behaviorally. And when you went into her class, students were on task and just really trying to solve those difficult problems that you put forth every single day. You're a gifted mathematician, and also in terms of your interdisciplinary work with the STEAM Academy, you're a tremendous colleague in bringing that academy off the ground. We appreciate it so much. One other piece about Linda that you may not know is that she's also responsible for the amazing calligraphy on all of the awards that took place at the end of the eighth grade graduation. Those were her, and we're going to miss that this year. Also, one thing about Linda is that she spends a considerable amount of time volunteering her time. I know you don't like to publicize that part of your life, but lives have been changed around our region because of the extraordinary work that Linda Stewart has done in our community. So already, you have left us, and we miss you in the hallways, but we wish you a wonderful, wonderful retirement. Congratulations.
Okay, the first person that I'd like to recognize tonight is a paraprofessional at Wareham High School. She has now been there for 30 years, Maji Rakovsky. Maji, thank you. Anyone who knows Maji knows that standing in front of everyone here tonight is not her thing. She likes to be behind the scenes, but she's a mover and a shaker. Maji, her current assignment, which she's had for the last few years, is as the alternative learning supervisor in our school, and Maji does an outstanding job in this capacity, dealing with some kids that aren't very excited to be in there. Maji also has been charged with organizing many of our senior class trips and has done so pretty much every other year for the last 15 years and done an awesome job with that. She's very involved in her classroom and creating a positive atmosphere. She's very consistent, she's very fair, and she's upfront with the students, and they really respond well to that. Maji, she's just done a wonderful job. Anytime there's a family in need, Maji's the first person to step up. If there's someone dealing with issues, she's the first person to stop by the house. She's just a wonderful, wonderful human being, and I always tell her, you'd give the shirt off your back for any one of these kids that asks for it. She's just that kind of person. We love having her on board, and, you know, I can't say enough, great things about Maji Rakovsky. So I just want to thank her for her 30 years of service, and I look forward to many more years of service working with Maji Rakovsky. So thank you. I'm going to call up my friend, Mr. Barnett, please. Mr. Paul Barnett. Math teacher at Wareham High School for 20 years, although, I don't know, he looks like he's just out of college. But he's affectionately known as Paul Z. We have a great time with him in the math department. He is a chaplain and a major for the US Army. He has served for 28 years in the US Army. Thank you for your service, Paul. Beyond that, he has done two tours of duty, one in 1991 with Desert Storm, and most recently, I'm sure you've all heard about his tour, from 2009 to 2010 in Operation Iraqi Freedom. So again, Paul, thank you for your service. On his last tour, he was awarded the Bronze Star, and I finally got to hear the backstory on that. I'm really proud of what you and all the folks that were in your unit did on that one day, and amazing story, and so proud of you. So as I said, Paul began, it seems like yesterday, teaching math at Wareham High School, and he's done that ever since. But he's also had many different hats that he's worn inside the school, and I'd like to just recognize him for some of those hats that he's worn. He's mostly taught, in the last few years, upperclassman in math. He's been an advisor. Before the multicultural club was K through 12, he was the advisor and one of the initial advisors for this great program we have in the district, so we all owe it to you for where that program has morphed into at this point. So thank you, Paul, for that. He has also been an advisor for the Faith Club and the Step Club. He happened to coach football with an awesome coach, from what I understand. And in an after-school program, he's worked with our students that were in need after school. He taught summer school. In his spare time, he's given back to the community, coaching JBA, Little League, Tigers, and if you go to any of the local Wareham parades, Veterans Day, Memorial Day, you may see him, and you may be lucky enough to see him on the podium speaking. So I want to congratulate Paul for 20 years, and I look forward to another 20, my friend. So we also want to recognize Rebecca Tetrault. She's one of our paraprofessionals with 20 years of service to Wareham High School and many Wareham public schools in the district. She is affectionately known as Mrs. T. by her students and many colleagues, for that matter, and she works in our young adult program. She works with students that are cognitively delayed and many that have physical limitations. She is a CNA, which allows her to bring an even greater level of service to our students. Rebecca is very caring with all of her students she services and treats them like they were one of her own kids. She is truly like having another teacher in the classroom, and we want to congratulate Rebecca Tetrault on 20 years of service at the Wareham Public Schools. Thank you.
So I also, I'm back up here, the next person I'm going to mention is retiring after 24 years, and that's Jerry Orick, who's not here today, but he's worked in a number of different schools, but I'm going to claim him for middle school. So Jerry is not here, but he's down in Florida, I believe, enjoying a nice retirement. Jerry is really instrumental in building the music program in our school. And so I met Jerry last year, and we have so many students who went on to the high school, participated in the marching band, and have a deep love of music because of the foundation that Jerry put forth in this school. So in recognition of Jerry and all the incredible things that he did with our kids in building the music program, let's give him a big round of applause. Thank you.
I would like to recognize Catherine Blake for her 20 years of service. Is she here? Kathy works for me, so it's the last four years of like another 20, so we could add probably another, but maybe like equal it to 40 because she's had to work with me for the last four years. But I have to say that there's something quite wonderful about being able to connect with Kathy and having that sense of knowing that there's always a smile behind it. You're talking about a human being who is unbelievably kind and loving and open to everyone, always. She has a way of getting what she needs. She calls it, what, blinking your eyelashes or? Yeah. So we get a lot done over the phone. She does that, so it's kind of amazing. And any space that she's in turns beautiful somehow. She's magical with the way in which she can set up spaces and make them just so lovely in her work. So I just want to congratulate you for your time and your service. She's also a grandmother and loves her family very much, so congratulations.
I'm just going to mention a couple of people who are not here this evening, but that doesn't get them out of not being embarrassed. So Corinne Lenahan has been a bus driver for Wareham Public Schools for 30 years, which I think is like 60 years in any other role, because I think a bus driver is a tough job. She drives to Osterville every day, which with the work on the bridge has been even more difficult the last few weeks. But she is, you know, a highly valued member of staff. She's well-liked by her colleagues, her parents, and, most importantly, the students, and we're very grateful for all her work. So thank you very much. And then finally, I would just like to mention Bobby Holmgren, who has worked on fields and grounds for the last 20 years for Wareham Public Schools, and in fact, has been our head of fields and grounds for the last few years. I have the privilege of getting to work with Bobby on a bunch of things, day in, day out, and he's a pleasure to work with. He knows our fields and our grounds and our systems, inside, out, and backwards. He put a lot of them in himself. He keeps them at a really high quality. If you're out, you know, on the field, you'll see how good their work is. It's a pleasure to work with him. He works really hard, and I would just like to thank him for all his service.
So you see, we're very fortunate, because we have many wonderful employees. It's our family. We congratulate you, we thank you. We know it's a very difficult job, and if it wasn't for your hard work, we would not be nearly as successful. So thank you for your time, your effort, and most importantly, thank you for being in Wareham. So now, we would like to invite you to have some refreshments. We will adjourn for a few minutes, and then we will resume our regularly scheduled business meeting. So thank you very much.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Oh, you didn't crack me. I'm happy for you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm just going to mention a couple of people who are not here this evening, but that doesn't get them out of not being embarrassed. So Corinne Lenahan has been a bus driver for Wareham Public Schools for 30 years, which I think is like 60 years in any other role, because I think a bus driver is a tough job. She drives to Osterville every day, which with the work on the bridge has been even more difficult last few weeks. But she is, you know, a highly valued member of staff. She's well-liked by her colleagues, her parents, and most importantly, the students. And we're very grateful for all her work. So thank you very much. And then finally, I would just like to mention Bobby Holmgren, who has worked on fields and grounds for the last 20 years for Wareham Public Schools, and in fact, has been our head of fields and grounds for the last few years. I have the privilege of getting to work with Bobby on a bunch of things, day in, day out, and he's a pleasure to work with. He knows our fields and our grounds and our systems, inside, out, and backwards. He put a lot of them in himself. He keeps them at a really high quality. If you're out, you know, on the field, you'll see how good their work is. It's a pleasure to work with him. He works really hard, and I would just like to thank him for all his service.
So you see, we're very fortunate, because we have many wonderful employees. It's our family. We congratulate you, we thank you. We know it's a very difficult job, and if it wasn't for your hard work, we would not be nearly as successful. So thank you for your time, your effort, and most importantly, thank you for being in Wareham. So now, we would like to invite you to have some refreshments. We will adjourn for a few minutes, and then we will resume our regularly scheduled business meeting. So thank you very much.
Oh, they were so good.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Oh, you didn't crack me. I'm happy for you.
Thank you.
So you see, we're very fortunate, because we have many wonderful employees. It's our family. We congratulate you, we thank you. We know it's a very difficult job, and if it wasn't for your hard work, we would not be nearly as successful. So thank you for your time, your effort, and most importantly, thank you for being in Wareham. So now, we would like to invite you to have some refreshments. We will adjourn for a few minutes, and then we will resume our regularly scheduled business meeting. So thank you very much.
Oh, they were so good.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Oh, you didn't crack me. I'm happy for you.
Thank you, April.
My name is Jim Fied. I also live in Wareham, a taxpayer, and I have to agree with everything that the two ladies ahead of me said. I'm here today to talk about the bus. I've been told, my wife told me, that there's going to be a bus fee, which I don't have a problem paying, because I believe that if the town needs money, I have no problem providing the money. Like, I'd pay more taxes. I know other towns' taxes are higher. I want Wareham School to be up there with the other town schools. I graduated Wareham High. I love Wareham. I left, I came back. What I really don't understand about the bus fees is why they have to be paid in a certain time, like we have to pay it by the end of May. That sounds kind of bullish to me. Also, the product that you're selling, currently, I have to take my daughter to the bus stop, which is about a half a mile from my house, which I don't mind paying the money for the bus, but I don't want to have to continue driving a half a mile from my house just to bring her there, so then she can get to school. So most days, I just end up bringing her to school, because I only live two miles away. So it just seems ridiculous to drive a half a mile to the bus stop and then continue on to the school. I don't even think the bus stop is very safe. I think it's poorly chosen. My wife has addressed those concerns, and I don't feel like anybody listens to them, and I really don't feel like anybody cares. That's all I got to say.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who'd like to address the committee?
No, I echo the, thanking the parents coming out as well. I attended both the third and fourth grade session and the eighth grade session, and I thought it was well-attended. There was, especially in the third and fourth grade, I was really surprised at the positivity, a lot of, you know, both parents showing up. It was a great little event. I liked it a lot. And I think Dr. Stedman, the students he had, chaperone everybody, they did a great job as well.
I'm a Wareham resident, taxpayer, parent, teacher, and vice president of our Wareham Education Association. And this week when I learned about our new configuration and that we would be keeping our assistant principals, I was elated. I was. As a taxpayer, though, I feel a bit deceived. And as a Wareham Public School employee who has endured months and months of emotional distress over the financial state of our schools, I feel misled. The climate of our schools, beginning in about February, I think it was, has changed drastically. You'd never know it at our school. Teachers are awesome. We're building castles. We're dressing up as medieval characters. We have, you know, teachers staying after school, painting courtyards. We have a dedicated staff. We have a third-year teacher who dressed up in a different medieval theme every day, and her kids did too. I mean, I was blown away. She took pictures every day. It was a different theme. She's amazing. And those are the ones I worry about. Because as a result of all of this hysteria, teachers that we want to keep here, innovative, creative, dedicated teachers, who are established in their careers, some of them are, not all, but they're invested in Wareham, they're looking for positions elsewhere. You know, I hear them. I'm being asked, you know, as references. They're dusting off their resumes. It's a sad state when trust is lost in the process and in our leaders. So, you know, we understand the financial hardship. We understand tightening of the belt. What we don't understand is the claims of despair, the threats of monumental staff cuts, the likes of which we've never seen before. And then five weeks before school ends, oh, never mind, just kidding. You know, I mean, these are not just your employees. They're teachers, staff members. They have families. They have college tuition, their own, maybe their children. They have mortgages. They need to feel that they are in a stable environment. And I feel that they're not being valued as that. I feel that we're being used as pawns, and for what endgame, I really don't know. But I thank you for your hard work. I know it's a difficult situation, but I feel like it was really thrown on us, that all this hysteria. And like I said, I'm glad that it ended up the way it did. I don't know what happened. Did we find gold or oil or something? I'm not sure. But I just feel really misled, and I just wanted you to know that. And hopefully, looking to the future, we can avoid these tactics. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to address the committee?
Hello, my name is April Rossi. I am a Wareham resident. I am a cheer coach. I am a substitute teacher. I work in the town, and I try to volunteer for as many things as humanly possible, especially relating to the kids in this town, because I truly love where we live. In regards to the last meeting, I had asked a question that I felt was not answered, and I know that a lot of people were looking for answers. My question was, because of all of the changes and all of the negativity that people are perceiving with the Wareham Public Schools, there are a lot of people looking to school choice. I've had friends put their houses on the market after hearing of this configuration and are looking to leave the town altogether. Not opposed to paying more taxes in another town, which shows me that people who care enough about the schools wouldn't be opposed to an override, should that ever come up. But my question was, when we're trying to instill confidence in our school system and in our Wareham Public Schools, within the last couple of years, we've had three of our major administrators looking to seek positions in other districts. So how are you going to instill confidence for people to keep their kids here when some of the top administrators were looking to leave the district themselves?
Well, I'm sorry that you feel your question wasn't answered, but this isn't the forum to answer it right now. This is public comment, so we're not able to answer that question right now.
So you're not allowed to address comments that anyone that makes on it?
No. We're here to listen to what anyone has to say.
And then will it be to address at a later time? Because as of the last meeting and the public comment, it was still not addressed.
I was there. I believe the question was answered.
It was not answered. You can go back and review the tape, because a lot of people have. It was not answered.
Okay.
And it just, it's disconcerting that you want to encourage people to stay here and have faith in a system that it looks like the administration themselves doesn't have faith in.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, April.
My name is Jim Fied. I also live in Wareham, a taxpayer, and I have to agree with everything that the two ladies ahead of me said. I'm here today to talk about the bus. I've been told, my wife told me, that there's going to be a bus fee, which I don't have a problem paying, because I believe that if the town needs money, I have no problem providing the money. Like, I'd pay more taxes. I know other towns' taxes are higher. I want Wareham School to be up there with the other town schools. I graduated Wareham High. I love Wareham. I left, I came back. What I really don't understand about the bus fees is why they have to be paid in a certain time, like, we have to pay it by the end of May. That sounds kind of bullish to me. Also, the product that you're selling, currently, I have to take my daughter to the bus stop, which is about a half a mile from my house, which I don't mind paying the money for the bus, but I don't want to have to continue driving a half a mile from my house just to bring her there, so then she can get to school. So most days, I just end up bringing her to school, because I only live two miles away. So it just seems ridiculous to drive a half a mile to the bus stop and then continue on to the school. I don't even think the bus stop is very safe. I think it's poorly chosen. My wife has addressed those concerns, and I don't feel like anybody listens to them, and I really don't feel like anybody cares. That's all I got to say.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who'd like to address the committee? The next item on the agenda is good news. Would anyone like to share any good news?
I would. I would urge people to please come to the high school for the theater this weekend, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and a matinee on Sunday, as well as a brunch, a wonderful performance. I would urge you to come. Also, DECA has their drive for Ford on Saturday between 9:00 and 3:00. It's in the parking lot by the multi-service center, so please come and drive a new car. DECA will receive $20, I believe, for every test drive. So it's a good cause, and we would appreciate your support.
I would just like to take this opportunity to thank the families who came out this week to the meetings that were held for the seventh graders going into the high schools, the eighth graders, and for the incoming third and fourth graders that are coming into the middle school. It was a great opportunity. They were well-attended. There will be more meetings, so I encourage people to come out to these meetings. They'll be very helpful in the transition that will be happening. Thank you. Joyce? Sorry?
No, I echo the, thanking the parents coming out as well. I attended both the third and fourth grade session and the eighth grade session, and I thought it was well-attended. There was, especially in the third and fourth grade, I was really surprised at the positivity, a lot of, you know, both parents showing up. It was a great little event. I liked it a lot. And I think Dr. Stedman, the students he had, chaperone everybody, they did a great job as well. They really did. And I think Mrs. Stedman also pointed out what a great job the janitors were doing for this building, and they really are. It's, they really do a great job here. And I noticed it as well at the high school, when I went to the high school. And when I went to the high school for that eighth grade, the incoming eighth graders, it was Mr. Palladino and Ms. Freitas, and they put on a presentation, and it's just, I just, they do such a great job, the principals over there, Mr. Palladino and Ms. Freitas. They really connect with the families, I believe, and they, you're welcome there, and you ask whatever you want, and I just think they do a great job.
Thank you, Mike.
I would like to thank the people that came out tonight. It's not just good news, it's great news, that we didn't have one person speak at public comment. We had three different people. And it takes a lot to come and express concerns when you know people may or may not agree with you. Public comment is important. Your voices are important, and I want to reassure you that you're heard, and I appreciate that you came out tonight to say what you needed to say.
Next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of our meetings. We'll approve, we'll be approving the minutes from April 23rd, April 25th, and April 27th. Does anyone have any questions or changes to the minutes?
I did have a question on the April 23rd meeting, which was the Monday ahead-of-town meeting, when Mike brought a couple of concerns about the vote. While I didn't disagree that, you know, they were together, I did make known that I was not prepared for that vote, and I would really like that to be reflected in the record.
Any other changes or comments?
Under School Committee reports, where you made, you know, the announcements for the...
Which date, Mike?
Oh, so, April 25th.
The 3rd.
April 25th.
5th, okay.
Yeah. Where the announcements were made for the committee assignments and stuff. So there's like, three of them that are superintendent advisory committees. Now, the superintendent chooses those members, correct?
Correct.
All right, so just, it just stuck out to me, the word "assignments." So it says Chair Backyaki made the following committee assignments, whereas you didn't really make all the assignments. I just thought we'd change that to announcements? And also, further up, where it says superintendent's report, if you go up, like, there's one sentence and then a paragraph where it states Mrs. Pratt was not opposed to allow input on important agenda items, et cetera. And then it says she suggested this topic be added to a future meeting to allow members to do their research and think about it further.
Uh huh.
And she did. I mean, she did suggest a future meeting, but she was specific about, she said, not just, not the next meeting, but the meeting after. And I'd like to have that reflected in the minutes. Do you need a motion for that?
Michelle, do we need a motion to change? We'll just approve them as amended?
Well, you have to, yeah, you'd have to make a motion with the amendments, then vote it, yes or no.
All right, so let's go back to the minutes of April 23rd. So, could I have a motion to approve those minutes as amended?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Now, April 25th.
Is that 5:00?
Yes. Sorry, Michelle. April 25th, could I have a motion to approve those minutes as amended?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? And then April 27th, any changes to those? If not, could I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Next on the agenda is the update on the Minutet Forest Building Project. Good evening.
Good evening, School Committee.
Good evening.
So, my name is Michael Willenham, School Business Manager, and I have a couple of the guests with me here as well to help provide this update, having Dennis Daly from the Mount Vernon Group, who's the architect on the, ah, designer, architect on the Minutet Forest Building Project, and Tony Oliver, who works for a PMA, who are the owners' project manager. So we're just going to give a quick update on this project. Dennis has got some slides, and just before I get into that, we get into that, I'll just give you an update. So we are now looking at two different scenarios. So MSBA in light of enrollment trends and closure of Minutet have asked us to look at both, you know, make sure we're building the right size of school. So we're looking at both pre-K through 4 and pre-K through 3. So you'll see, Dennis is going to give us an overview of the different designs that we're looking at for both of those configurations. So, I'll hand over to you, Dennis.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Michael. And...
Do you want to swap places?
Yeah. And, the up arrow, right? Those of you who know me, know I'm pretty dangerous with slide shows, so. So thank you very much for having us, and just try to give you a quick overview of what we've been looking at. We're looking at scenarios, as Michael pointed out, for pre-K, well, actually, it's officially K through 4 plus pre-K, that there's 1,020 students, which represent the population of pre-K through 4. And then the associated pre-K, which is a number that stands alone. This is the way it's described by the MSBA. So, in that alternative, we are building a school which occupies the Minutet Forest site using the upper level and coming down on the, this, I'd like to point out that Minutet Avenue, which is at the northern end of the site, is down on the slide, so north is down. And if you look at the, on the left-hand side, you'll see there's a wing. That wing is at a lower level, which allows us to make that wing three stories, with our main level being at the second story and served in the upper part of the building. That will be demonstrated by looking at the floor plans. The concept was to take pre-K and K and treat it separately as that lower level, so that school, that portion of the school could operate for the smaller children and their specialized schedules and other things. That allowed us to, and that would have its own entry, associated parking, and so forth, drop-off area, and so forth. And then the second floor would have a main entry at the center of the building. That's the main floor. So that's at the level where the bus drop-off would be, and the service in the back would also be at that level. Designing it in this way allows us to put the public spaces, such as the cafeteria, the gymnasium, and other areas of the administration areas, all there accessible from the main entry, and allows us to have academic wings off of that, which can be locked off at nights as the community can use the main part of the building, the public part of the building. And it's also a configuration where there are two grades shown on this floor, and as you see the next floor above, two grades directly above that. And those grades are linked in the public part of the building, what we call, with what we call our innovation hub. And that will be sort of the modern, 21st century type of media center, which will be more than typical books sort of library, but a true media center with all the modern conveniences, as well as the ability to serve as steam classroom areas as well, and art, and bring all those things together in a meaningful way. So the other thing about having the two wings, it gives the flexibility of having first and second in one wing, and third and fourth in the other, or having first and second on the first floor, third and fourth on the second floor. It's a nice, simple way where each class can have their own neighborhood, and that was an important driver in the development of our plan. One of the great, important drivers that came out of our visioning was that we wanted to develop an educational plan in which this rather large school could be broken up into smaller learning communities, which were more appropriate to the kids, and having each grade as a neighborhood seemed to really work well. So this sort of hub between the grades is very important, and we carried it on in our second scheme. This is an 820 student, because we dropped the fourth grade off of it. So it's 820 students, K through 3, with pre-K. In this particular scheme, we would readjust the placement of the building on the site, so we'd get it all on the flat. We wouldn't have to have that drop-off where we could slide the pre-K underneath, because we're dropping a grade, we would put the pre-K and K on the main floor, along with the first grade. And the community wing is, for all intents and purposes, the same as the community wing on the other project, the other alternative. The only difference being, the spaces would be proportionally smaller. The cafeteria would be serving less people, so it'd be slightly smaller, kitchen slightly smaller, gymnasium would be the same size. So the second floor, in such a scheme, would be very similar to the second academic floor on the other, on the other building. What we're doing is basically taking the fourth grade out, and the gap that's left, using that to be filled by the pre-K and K, and allowing us to keep it as a two-story building. So, that in a nutshell explains how we're addressing this particular... I should like to point out as well, the innovation hub would, again, grow proportionally smaller with the population, because those are all population-based figures.
Thank you. I do have a question. Could you explain why we're now looking at the two different sized buildings?
We were asked by MSBA, that's Massachusetts School Building Authority, to do so because of, they keep a very close eye on all the projects. They're responsible for projects in every district in the state, and they keep a close eye on all of them. And they're concerned that all the districts have all the information they need and do their due diligence to be able to present it to the taxpayers when it comes to town meeting, or if it comes to city council. And so, in this particular case, the issue that the Minutet Forest was going to be closed and some kids were going to be moved around, came to light in a newspaper article. They see these things, they read them for every district, and so they said, you know, maybe you should look at this, because what effect is this going to have? What kind of questions are they going to be? Is it going to work for you? Can it work for you? And do all you can to figure it out, to make it work. That either you have a solution that will work, or you have the, all the answers to all the pertinent questions that the taxpayers expect and deserve to have answered. So, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Mike?
So who interfaces with them? Does the superintendent or you guys? Like, who discusses that with MSBA?
So, a superintendent and the owner's project manager are the kind of key avenues for conversations with MSBA.
So, was it made clear that this was, this great configuration and moving everything around was a temporary situation, one way or the other?
Yes. Actually, they called me on a Friday night, as I was coming back to our Friday night meeting, and we had a lengthy discussion. We followed a discussion on Monday. You know, there are several factors which we kept, which I kept pointing out to the MSBA. One is, we have the housing project that could be coming in, in the near future. Also, the fact that we were doing this on a temporary basis for several reasons. One was financial, but one was also, if we could save the town money by starting the build sooner, then that would be something that we would like to explore. We had no intention of going anything but a pre-K through 4, and we certainly were not willing to look at moving, they wanted us to look at moving seventh grade to the high school. That was not even something that we would even remotely consider. So we had, you know, we made that very clear. However, since they hold the money, they did strongly urge us to go back to the drawing board to explore this, and we should have some further results in the very near future. We do not want to change the pre-K through 4 configuration. We think that meets our needs. We worked on our ed plan that matched a building as that, and that's how we wish to move forward. However, we still are mandated by MSBA to go through this exercise.
And now, when are we going to hear one way or the other, if they're going to make us go one way or another?
So, on Monday, we have a meeting of the School Building Committee, and they will, at that point, decide the preference for the, so it'll be the decision of the School Building Committee as part of the PSR, which is the next submission to the MSBA, and then that will go forward for review with the MSBA, and at that point, we'll discuss that with them.
So Monday, there's a meeting, but we won't necessarily have an answer?
Well, we'll have an answer about what our preferred option is, but we won't have an answer about the MSBA's response to that.
Okay.
So then you're saying that even though the committee approves one, that the MSBA may say no?
So my experience is that they will more, it'll be more a case of they will be looking for the justification for the decision we've made. You know, they kind of tread a fine balance between allowing us to develop a locally approved, a locally suitable option, and also want us to steer us in the right direction. So having given us this prod to go back and look and make sure we're building the right size of school, once we've done our due diligence, done our planning, got the School Building Committee's approval, and gone back to them, if we can make a strong enough case, which I feel expect we will, then my expectation is that they will support that.
So I just want to clarify again, so the reason that we have to go through this exercise is because of the reconfiguration that's happening? Is that true?
Well, really, it's because they're looking at enrollment, and they're saying, look, and the capacity of the schools we have, let's make sure that you're not going to be over-capacity or under-capacity, looking at enrollment projections going forward. So, I mean, my, I mean, I, my understanding from what MSBA has said is that they just really want to make sure we build the right building for the community. So, and, you know, we don't open a building that's got tons of empty space, or open one which needs an extension, or needs portables remote to our classrooms in two years' time. So, it's really just about our due diligence and making sure we have the right project.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. So next on the agenda is the discussion and vote on the transportation fee for the 2018-2019 school year. Hello.
Hi.
I'm Jamie Andrews, Transportation and Facilities Manager for the Wareham School Department. So we're here to, here today to discuss the proposal of bus fees. What I want to propose is a $100 fee per student, and the second student would be, and the same family would be 75, and the third student would be 50, with a cap of $225 for the family. Any questions?
Go ahead, Jamie.
Just to clarify for everyone watching and anyone in the audience, we're talking...
we're talking about certain grade levels, right, that this would apply to, and also, it wouldn't apply to a child that's, has transportation in their IEP, and are children that receive free lunch. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. Yeah, by state law, anyone K through six over two-point mile, two-point-oh miles is free to get a ride to school. So, and, exactly, with anyone that hasn't, and they've written in their IEP, that is correct. They do not have to pay. Five-oh-four is obviously a little different. That doesn't have a specialized transportation in it. And, that's about it, man.
Thank you.
How many students are we talking about when we take out all of those groups that will not be charged a fee? I'm curious as to the number of students that are eligible for the fee under this plan.
I'm glad you asked. I have that number. Going through the whole district, our total number would be five-hundred-and-forty-six that are eligible to pay. Throughout the entire district. That's taking out.
Yeah, out of how many students do you?
Out of two-thousand-one-hundred-and-seventy-six. Two-thousand-one-hundred-and-seventy-six.
Two-thousand-one-hundred-and-seventy-six, that's, is that everybody in the district?
That's taking out, anyone that's out of district sped. In district sped.
Yeah, but they're not all, you don't, you don't, right now, bus two-thousand-one-hundred-and-seventy-six students, do you?
No, but as of now, we have no way of knowing, out of the two-thousand-one-hundred-and-seventy-six, who actually rides the bus.
Okay. I think, now, did he answer your question? Okay.
Yeah, five-hundred-and-forty-six students would be charged the fee, should they want to ride the bus.
Right.
Is that correct?
Yes.
So, does that mean that there are two-thousand-one-hundred-and-seventy-six students in grade seven through twelve?
That, that number is K through twelve.
Okay. So, the five-hundred-and-forty-six are the seven through twelve students who will be required to pay?
Ah, the five-hundred-and-forty-six, that is total students, K through twelve, that would be to pay.
So, how, okay. But the K through six don't have to pay.
K through six that live over two-point-oh miles, don't have to pay.
So, if you were K through six, and you live between one and two miles, you would pay?
If you weren't free or reduced.
Right. And any students that are free and reduced would not pay?
Correct.
So, the number that we're working from would be the two-thousand number, and then we would work backward. We would take off the free and reduce. We would take off the students that.
Yeah, that's what I did to get to that five-hundred-and-forty-six.
Okay.
So, currently, the K through six that are the one to two miles, do they, they're not eligible to be bused at all, right now?
They are.
They are.
K through six, we bus.
Even under two miles?
One to two miles, we bus. We do not bus anyone under two miles, or under one.
Under one.
Yeah. Go ahead.
So, so of that, of that two-thousand-one-hundred-and-seventy-six, how many are free and reduced that don't have to pay?
It's one-thousand-one-hundred-and-ninety-nine students that live over two-point-one miles, and that receive free or reduced lunch. That's K through six.
One-thousand-one-hundred-and-ninety-one students, in what category?
That live over two miles that receive, that live over two miles and that are free or reduced lunch. That's K through six number.
But we wouldn't, K through, K through six gets bused either way, over two miles.
Over two miles.
Right, so, over two, over two miles, who is getting, who doesn't have to pay? I mean, how many people don't have to pay over two miles?
Only go over.
I'm basically looking for the free and reduced lunch figure for students living outside of two miles. And I guess, you know, seven through twelve and.
So, say that, what number is it you're after there?
Yeah, what number are you looking for? Like, I have a whole bunch of numbers here.
Okay, okay. So, so, we're trying, you've given me a number of five-hundred-and-forty-six people who are eligible to pay, meaning that they will pay if they want to ride the bus.
Right, and that's K through twelve, yeah.
Who, who are we not able to charge, but otherwise would, if they weren't on free and reduced lunch, that, that fall outside of that criteria?
Well, there's sixteen-hundred-and-thirty, so, so it's just.
Yeah, six-hundred-and-thirty students who either live over the two-point-one miles, two-point-oh-one miles, and receive free or reduced lunch.
So, how many?
One-thousand-six-hundred-and-thirty.
So, one-thousand-six-hundred-and-thirty students will be riding the bus that we're not allowed to charge, right?
Correct.
Okay. Aside from the K through six, outside of two miles?
Yes.
Okay. And what about, what about inside of the one-point-oh to two-point-oh miles? Is that reflected in the sixteen-hundred-and-thirty as well?
Yes.
All right, thank you. That, that's a huge disparity. That's, I thought it was going to be like, like fifty-four percent. It's, it's much higher than that.
No, I was, until I, when I figured out the numbers and went through them again today, it was a lot bigger than I thought it was, originally.
No, no, no. You haven't talked about it yet, but to echo, one of the gentlemen who did come up here and talk about, I have no problem paying the fee for my child to ride the bus, but we haven't passed this yet, and you're asking for payment within twenty days for next year, correct?
Right.
For no, no cash and no personal checks. So, I mean, does that seem sufficient time for the people who are going to have to pay, to pay?
Well, with the, with the time, like, with anything, that can be moved up or down. We just decided to come up with a number where it would be fresh in everybody's minds, where it's something, if we drag along, the closer we get to the summer, now we're filling summer stuff, and we've got to get ready for next year.
To me, that's my only deterrent for, for this. Again, my, my son will have to take the bus. I will be one of the people who pays, but less than three weeks for most people is, isn't enough time for that, for money, like that.
Understood.
I think one of the reasons why we need a date is because, in the past, we've tried to do surveys to see who's going to ride, and they dribble in, and when we look at bus routing, we're not able to, when, when they build the bus route, they have to plan for everybody on that route who could possibly ride. Therefore, when you see some of the buses, they're less than three-fourths full. One of the things that we're working on doing is trying to plan the routes for the number of students who are going to ride. Now, if we need to extend that date, that's, that's fine. That's something that we can work at. What we do need to do, though, is to get the survey in, so we can begin our planning to, for the bus routes.
So, how, what kind of a change would you make? Would you make a change for both the survey and the payment? Would you want the survey ahead of the payment? Because then you'd have to.
I think the fee part, I wouldn't want to change. I think, when I broke it down, it's like fifty-five cents a day to ride the bus.
No, 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 I mean the date. I'm sorry, not the amount.
Oh, just the date?
Not the amount. So, let's say today's May ninth. What if we said, we made it thirty days from today, so June ninth? Is that, is that a reasonable?
Yeah, I mean, we could even go into, like, July fifteenth or something like that, to give people plenty of time. What we do desperately need is the survey that would reserve the spot.
Okay. So, I don't know. I'm just thinking of the person who has to keep track of that survey and that payment, and I think it would be best to keep it together. So, what would be your date for the payment? What would be the last date? I mean, for the survey, really. What would be the?
Ideally, I would like to keep it before school ends, because if you start getting into that, vacations start happening, people start going away, people forget. And then, I'm going to plan for them not being on the bus, because I have no form, I have no payment. So, I'd like to have it at the latest, no later than when school gets out.
Okay.
So, what if it could be just a deposit instead of the full payment? To, to save a spot?
I have no issue with that. It, it might be coming, but then you might get to the fall into where you have to start tracking down people to get the rest of the payment.
Right.
Yeah. So, at least if we, if we extend that date, it gives people more time.
I do have one other question, just to throw it out there. What if you just send, send home the survey, just to get an idea of how many even would be pay, you know, paying customers? So, is it even worth it?
Well, when I ran the survey last year and gave months to do, I got, barely even got half of the student body, which was over, over two thousand. And I gave them months and months, and didn't receive a lot of feedback out of it.
If they know that they can't, their child needs to have this filled out in order to ride the bus?
Yeah, I'd love to have a registration where I get it, I know, and I can start planning for when the kids are on the bus. That's what I need the most, the money part, like, we can always come back, we can find you. It's not going to be easy, but I need the registration form to plan for next year more than anything.
I've got, I've got a couple of questions, or slash concerns. So, of, you know, these students, we've got one-thousand-six-hundred-and-thirty that cannot be charged based upon either where they live, or that they're on free or reduced lunch. And regardless on whether they plan to ride the bus or not, you have to account for at least that entire number to ride. Am I right in assuming? My concern, I, I feel the same as Lori. This is a very short timeframe. You know, this is the first that, you know, students, parents are hearing about this. And we're looking at, you know, charging only twenty-five percent of our students to ride the bus. And, and there's a little bit of frustration, especially with everything, you know, that's gone on in the last year. Parents are concerned about budget cuts, and sure, I, I have no problem, you know, paying for services for my child, you know, at the school. But I, I'm hearing from people, and just a little concerned, the, you know, there's, it's always the same group of parents that have to pay the athletic fees. They have to pay the AP test fee, and now they have to pay the, the bus fee. And, you know, there, it's, it seems a little frustrating on that side, when they're going to have to state, my child will be riding the bus. I want to make sure that you have all her information down. Here's her payment for riding a bus. But one-thousand-six-hundred-and-thirty students are not required to let you know if they're going to ride or not. We just have to plan on those.
No, I think, so that, the intention is that everybody has to fill in a form.
Yes, they have to register.
Regardless of payment, yes.
So, if they don't register, do you not count on them, or do you have to count them anyway?
No, we will not.
We will not count them.
You would not count them?
Right.
Okay. And I'm also still very concerned about, you know, you know, one to two miles. We live in New England, you know, we have horrible weather. I, I think we're deterring people from riding the bus, from getting to school, and we're just adding another frustration to parents who are already very frustrated. I, I have no problem with putting a fee out, and I know that we've had to do a lot of different measures to make this budget work, but this is kind of a sticking point with me. I'm very frustrated that, you know, this group of people are being required to, to pay additional money. I'm, I'm just really frustrated.
And, to be honest, I don't even know if it's worth it, because once people realize they have to pay, they may decide, you know what, I'll just drive them. So, that's why I'm thinking to, to get an idea of how many would actually do this.
Another concern I have, if, you know, a parent's frustrated, and they're going to drive their child anyway, are we going to lose more to out-of-district? If I've got to drive my child, I may drive them to another school. You know, this is a service we provide to the students and our families in town. And I, I think there's got to be a better way.
Michael, correct me if I'm wrong, but this charging for transportation has already been approved as part of the budget. This discussion is about the fee.
Well, I think for, for a vote this afternoon, this evening, is a vote to introduce a fee for buses. So, if you didn't approve this, then we would have to go back to the budget. We look at what that would require.
So, how much did you put in the budget to counter for this?
So, we budgeted around, eh, we budgeted forty-five thousand dollars from this.
I think it was, I think it was forty.
Forty?
Yeah, I think it was forty.
Forty thousand, it was forty to forty-five thousand.
Which is in line with the number that you're expecting?
Yeah.
Right, we'd have to.
Pretty close, yeah.
But it is.
And decide to take the bus.
It maxes out. But also assumes, you know, we are also planning, we hope there'll be some savings from requiring everybody to register, so that will allow us to reduce the number of runs that we do as well.
I think what, what our options are would be either to charge or not charge. Having students fill out the survey and receive a bus pass to actually ride the bus is something that, quite honestly, would be very beneficial to transportation. The reason why we need the bus pass is we need accurate data. And in the past, when we have tried to get this information completed, we've not been able to get it returned. We would be, you know, if you would like us to go back and look at the budget, that's something that we could do, in lieu of charging for transportation. But what I would certainly urge the committee would be to vote to have a registration for transportation, and to enact a bus pass for all students who ride the bus. Must have a bus pass to get on. Of course, there'll be contingency plans, and we'll work out details, but that certainly would go a long way to help us save money in transportation.
Okay, so when we set out, and this was described at a, at a meeting, at a budget meeting, what was the savings we expected to have? Like, two-hundred thousand, or two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, or a hundred-and-seventy thousand? I forget.
A hundred-and-seventy thousand, yeah.
A hundred-and-seventy? So, we're saving a hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars, or that's what we intended to. But now, there's sixteen-hundred-and-thirty free and reduced that you didn't even expect. I mean, that, that number kind of blew you guys away too, right? So, is that, do we lose a lot of the savings with that too? Because now you've got to go, you've still got to go get these kids, right? I mean, all over town, and, I mean, the, the routes are probably not going to really reduce that much, right?
You know, depending on what we, if, if you approve the registration forms, that would definitely go a long way. Because right now, I, I have to plan for two-thousand-one-hundred-and-seventy-six kids to ride the bus.
Right, but, I mean, these, these kids could be in every corner of the town, and they get, it's free. Why not just, you know, there's no reason not to, right? So, I guess there's a lot of unknowns here. We, I don't, I don't, I, I don't know if we're even going to save the hundred-and-seventy.
I mean, eh, so the savings are, but we did make, we did not, we looked at the number of students that currently, we looked at, because we take ridership surveys every November, so we looked at how many kids actually ride the bus, and the capacity of the buses we've got. And based on that, assumed that all those kids who rode the bus in this year would also want to ride the bus next year. But if we knew who they were ahead of times, we'd be able to reduce the number of routes, because the buses we have at the moment are not riding at capacity.
I'm sorry, tell me, how many people, how many kids currently ride the bus now?
I want to say it's like fifteen-hundred and ninety-two.
I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't have an exact number.
I've got it.
Guesstimate?
Give me, I'm going to say like sixteen-hundred.
Fifteen, sixteen-hundred.
So, is it true in the past that the survey you tried to do was not mandatory?
That's true.
And so, this would be mandatory? If they didn't fill out that survey and get a bus pass, they would not ride the bus?
Right, that's the way, I want to roll from, I want to go from here on out, making it mandatory to fill it out. So, it would definitely help gauge how many buses we could run every year. Instead of running buses at three-quarters full or half-full, we could actually fill the buses, rearrange drivers, and save the district money.
Okay. So, I guess my question, either to Michael or to the superintendent, is what would the impact on the budget be if we didn't charge that fee?
We would go back and look at the budget, forty thousand dollars. We would go back and look at the budget, $40,000 we would find, hopefully, sometimes, we would find it. But where we find it, that's what we would need to go back and look through the budget. And what we can cut to keep this.
But if we didn't charge the fee, then is it basically status quo? Is it the same as this year? What's the difference?
Well, the idea if we don't charge the fee but still register, because people still have to register.
All right, so, all right, so we're talking $45,000 or $170,000? Because if people might just, if there's no fee, people are just going to register because they might use the bus, you know, one or two days. You know, so I think we're losing more money than $40,000. We're losing upwards of 170.
Well, when you put it like that, yes, we would be. If you're just going to register and you're not sure if you're going to ride the bus or not, then yes. What we would want would be an honest survey where if you're truly going to use it, then please send it in. If you're not, don't. And I understand by attaching a fee that it makes it a little bit more, yes, I really am going to use this than just to fill out a paper.
That's true.
But that would really only apply to 25% of the students. So the other 75% could fill it out for the one or two days that they're going to use it.
So we were prepared to vote on a fee, whether or not to charge a fee and what that fee would be. So perhaps, should we continue with that vote? Okay. So the first vote will be, could I have a motion to approve the institution of a fee for transportation for the 2018-2019 school year? Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Abstained? So it's 3-2-0. Go ahead, Mike.
Can I ask other questions?
Sure.
And I just wanted to point out, I mean, I had to vote for that because 40,000 we might be able to scrape up, but we're not going to, you guys are going to tell me we're going to find $170,000. So, oh, sorry to put you on the spot, I just got to get this cleared up because there's rumors, and I just want to hear straight from the source here. I'm hearing complaints that the way this works with the bus monitors, all right, is that, you know, they make, now they're going to be making minimum wage. But what's going on, what I'm hearing is that, you know, when a driver is called up to be a bus monitor, they're being paid a much higher rate, I think $16 or what have you, and that's in the contract apparently. But I guess, are they being called ahead of the monitors? Or like, in other words, like, do you call the monitor first? And like, maybe then?
When monitor position comes up, the union gets first crack at it. And then if anyone, no one in the union wants, I go right to the monitors.
So we're giving the union first crack at bus monitors?
Right.
That seems upside down. I mean, that's, we're spending a lot, we should be trying to save money.
It's in the contract, I can't.
All right, it's in the contract, you might not be able to do anything about it, but that seems, we're paying people, how much should we pay them? The drivers that come in?
The drivers that cover for the monitors, they're making 16.
$16 versus $11 an hour. And how does this work? Because I thought we had a shortage of bus drivers, how can they be monitors if we need bus drivers?
You're only filling in when one of monitors is out sick, or more of like a midday kind of thing where we're picking up the preschool kids.
Or like a field trip or something?
Or something like that, nothing where, nothing every day, like, the monitors we have are riding with the sped department. And our drivers are driving, so they're not taking those spots.
Yeah, I love the bus drivers, I'll fight hard for them, but this is backwards. And I know it's in the contract, but that needs to be revisited next time it comes up.
Okay, so now the next vote will be for the fee that we will charge for transportation. No, we voted to charge a fee, so we need to approve the amount. So we can approve the amount as it's being proposed, but could we change the dates? Okay. Okay. Okay, so could I have a motion to approve the fee schedule as presented?
June 15th? Is June 15th okay to vote on that date?
We can, yeah, if that gives you enough time. Okay, so could I have a motion to approve the fee schedule as presented with the date, the deadline date changed to June 15th? Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Abstained? 3-2-0. Thank you.
You're welcome, have a good night.
Next on the agenda is a vote to participate as a school choice district for the coming school year.
Yes, every year, the school committee must make a vote on if you will accept school choice students. By voting yes, you would vote to accept students coming in to the district. The no vote would mean that you would not accept students coming into the district under school choice. However, that does not prevent students from leaving. So I would ask for the committee to please approve the district in being a school choice district. We've been a school choice district for a number of years.
Are there any questions?
It should be a K to 12, not preschool.
K to 12.
Yeah, K to 12.
Yes, can I just clarify, because I know, and you already did say it, but just to repeat it, is that if we say no to school choice, that does not mean that students here can't leave to another school district. I just want that to be clear, so that won't prevent that. It only allows students from out of district to come here.
Thank you, because I think that's important to clear that, to make that clear. Any other questions or comments? Could I have a motion to approve school choice for the coming school year?
So moved. Second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? 5-0-0.
Thank you.
And next on the agenda is a vote to increase substitute pay rates for teachers, paraprofessionals, permanent intermittent subs, custodians, and bus monitors. Hello again.
Nice to see you all again. So this was, we presented this at the town meeting on, sorry, the school committee meeting we had on the same night as town meeting, the proposal to raise certain hourly rates. And this is now to get your approval of those rates. So just asking, seeking a vote of your approval. I get a short memo just outlining the changes, it'll make sense. There had been like a couple of typos in the last one, so I'd actually put a couple of rates lower than we are actually already paying them. But the increases are already budgeted for next year, so it didn't really make any difference to the impact on the budget. And the final rates that we're proposing have not changed.
Does anyone have any questions? Mike?
I move to accept as presented.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, abstained? 5-0-0.
Excellent, thank you very much.
Next on the agenda is acceptance of a gift. Mr. Fitzgerald is going to join us.
Good evening. I did want to hook this up to show a photograph, but I can already tell I'm not going to be able to. And I'm not going to spend 10 minutes here trying to make it work while everybody's watching. This is great news, I thank you for, Chair Bakayaki, for letting me come up here right now. One of the best emails I've gotten in the last six years was from somebody who wants to remain anonymous, who described herself as someone who was a runaway teacher. She is a resident of Wareham. She was not an educator for the Wareham Public Schools. And she said she was going through her professional supplies and she hated that she had something that was just sitting in a storage unit when it should be with children. And that's when she told me she wanted to donate some books to the Wareham Education Association so that we could provide them for Wareham's children. And with the changes coming and the grades coming to Wareham Middle School, it seemed that it would be a good way to do things, to donate them to the public school system, particularly the middle school, because these books are largely aimed at grades three through five, grades three through six, I would say, even though many adults could enjoy some of them. Beverly Cleary titles, the Rail Fest Mouse series, which I loved as a child, Harry Potter, Summer Wild Doll books. And I'm sorry, I can't get the technology to work because she must have been a heck of a teacher because they're all in amazing condition, as in, "Don't you dare fold the corner of the page over, use a bookmark" type of condition, and they're all individually boxed and organized in a pile of boxes in my classroom. And we've got some empty boxes, which all of our colleagues who are about to move classrooms have been eyeing rather enviously over the last few weeks. I'm saving the best part for last, we counted them up. She has provided us with 1,189 books. It's incredible, as an English teacher, as somebody who loves reading and loves to teach reading, to have almost 1,200 books fall from the heavens or by someone who we could see as an angel just give them to our children is incredible. And we look, and the one thing she said, she wants them in the hands of children, not decorating a bookshelf somewhere, not in a curriculum closet, in the hands of children. And we donate them in the hope and the trust that we can work with the schools to get these wonderful books in the hands of our wonderful kids.
Thank you, Brian. Please pass along our thanks to that anonymous donor.
Certainly will. I tried hard to convince her to come, but she just wouldn't. But I'll pass that on, thank you, everybody.
So could I have a motion to accept that gift?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? 5-0-0. Next is the superintendent's report.
Yes, approval of bills and warrant payment you have listed. I would also like to add payroll in the amount of $145,649.28. Bill warrant in the amount of $204,230.60. And bill warrant in the amount of $1,180.79. I would ask for approval of what you have listed, as well as the other three that I just read.
Do I have a motion to approve as presented?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? 5-0-0.
Next, my mid-year evaluation. I sent you a document yesterday for your information. I will post this under superintendent on the website after tonight. If you have any questions, I'd be very happy to answer them.
Does anyone have any questions? Mike?
I thought I was going to have a ton of questions, but I received it kind of what the other day, right? Can we discuss it again next meeting?
Better, you can just send me questions that you have, and I'd be happy to answer them.
For the sake of the audience and for anyone who's listening, the superintendent has provided an update on her goals. So her goals are set in the fall, and this is a mid-cycle update of her progress towards those goals. That's what she's presented to the school committee.
And that will complete my report.
And just, it was just the goals, I mean, there's a lot more to the evaluation than the goals. Was it four or five goals?
Four.
Four goals. And do we remember what percentage that's supposed to count toward the evaluation?
55%, perhaps, I'd have to go back and look, something like that.
Yeah, because the remainder of the evaluation, I think, gets into a lot more detail. I mean, the goals the committee prior to this one came up with, and they were pretty broad. So that's why I don't have that many questions. So I think what I probably will have, will probably, I can talk to you about.
Okay.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is school committee reports. We have a schedule of our meeting dates for the next year, 2018, 2019. The great news is that we'll be moving the meeting space. We'll be meeting going forward over in the multi-service center in room 320. It's set up a little better for a meeting. Of course, there will be times when the meeting will be held here. So when we do expect a large crowd, when it's the budget hearing, or like a night, like tonight for recognition night, this meeting would be held here. But the other meetings, and it'll be posted, it'll be posted on the agenda when the agenda is posted where the meeting will be. Does anyone have any questions or comments about the dates? Oh, I'm sorry, yes, and the meetings will be held on Thursday, thank you, Lori. And the schedule will be posted online once it's approved.
I'd like to just say that I applaud the change. I think changing it to a room that's set up a little differently so that we're on the same level and that it's on a different night is actually a huge step in the right direction.
Well, the superintendent worked with the town administrator, and unfortunately, we couldn't get in there on a Wednesday night, but that's why the night is changed until Thursday.
So thank you.
Mike?
I have a suggested change for November 8th. That's the week that Massachusetts Association of School Committees does their conference, it's like a three-day conference. And I think it would be, I remember just, even on Wednesdays, we have to like, you know, rush back, you know, and there might be a conference, a seminar that might be going on that you might want to take and you can't. So I was thinking maybe on that day, just move it to the day before on Tuesday?
Well, the day before would be Wednesday.
Oh, I'm sorry, no, yeah, right, I'm still thinking Wednesdays. So the 6th, I guess? Oh, jeez, never mind.
But then we go home from the 1st through 20th?
15th. 15th.
Does anyone object to changing that meeting to the November 15th? Okay, so could I ask for a motion to approve that schedule with that change in November?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained? 5-0-0. Does anyone have any other business that was not, Mike?
I wish I brought this up when the transportation manager was here. I just, can someone just describe what's going on with the bus bid? Is it, are we moving forward with that or what's? Is, is, are we moving forward with that, or what's, what's going on there?
Michael, please join in if I miss something. We received one bus bid, and it was much greater than what we anticipated, which brought us considerably over budget. Do you have?
I mean, so, so we had gone into procurement, we received one bid, and the price per day for a bus was more than the current thing, and we just spent some time to look at this because we've gone out to bid. So, we did this last year as well, we went out to bid for all our services, and we didn't, well, we received one, uh, smaller proposal, which was not any beneficial. So this time, we were just going out to bid for a regular education in district, and we requested, uh, bids on that, and we received one bid from First Student. And the, so the, unfortunately, there's, because it's only part of the, part of the service, there's some overlapping costs, so we looked to see if there was any other ways, would we avoid duplicating costs. So, for example, both, both us and the vendor, we provide a dispatcher, we're providing different services, maintenance and so on. So we did look at if there, that's what's taken time really, is trying to understand how their bid was developed and what, what costs would be reduced. But, at the end of the day, it just wasn't possible to, to, to go with that vendor and keep our transportation costs down. So, uh, you know, so this is, you know, it's an opportunity for us to move forward, maintaining our services in-house, and really working with the drivers we have, and looking to recruit more drivers. In some ways, you know, we still have challenges in transportation, as you know, if you're talking about the budget, you know, our transportation costs have gone up ahead of everything else year after year, and that's really, those challenges are not going away. So we'll be looking to working with our driver and our transportation manager to try and deal with those.
Okay, and it's, it just sounds like that the answer...
Yeah, sure answers.
That the numbers were probably pretty clear, right?
Uh, yeah.
And I, I can respect that, but this, if anyone wants to look at anything, they can...
They can, yeah, it's all publicly available.
It's all public, right? I mean...
Absolutely.
It's not like, it's not like we're trying to, you know, hide any, you know, you know, just brush it under the rug or anything, you know?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So the, so, for example, the Bus Driver Union received a copy of the bids, because they requested it, so...
Yeah, because I got a lot of, I got a lot of questions about it, but I haven't even seen the bid.
Yeah, I'm happy to send it to you, I mean...
Yeah, you can send it to me, but I, I believe you though. I went through it, what was it, four or five years ago?
Yeah, yeah.
And we went to, at the time, we had a huge committee.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, every, every interest group between the capital planning and finance and board of selectmen and the, you know, the school committee and transportation, everybody was on that thing. We had, we actually had, what, three or four bids?
Yeah, I've seen the people...
It was actually, you know, comparable, and it was clear that we were doing it as most efficiently as we could.
Yeah.
But I think it's important to know that you did go out and get that information so now...
Yeah, and I would say, you know, because we were very serious about it, and if it had been successful, we absolutely would have done it. There's a lot, you know, we were, we were doing it intentionally, and it was good faith, but, hey, we just couldn't make it work.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
I have a question. Will there be any discussion regarding the, the change in like, the, the leadership slide and different things like that? I know that several people have mentioned, you know, that it is different than what was prepared for the budget in either scenario A, B, or the very bad C. And it's very different. Um, well, not very different, but it's not what was, it was expected in the budget vote. So I think a lot of people are looking to hear, um, an explanation, or where we found areas where we could, you know, use things a little bit differently. It sounds like the teachers' union is very happy to have, you know, the, the assistant principals, but just as, for transparency, and, you know, just for the trust that we need on, on the other side of the table. I, I was just curious if there's going to be a time to discuss that.
Yes, we would be very happy to come back and really show you how, how, as we came in to the budget, we've had a number of retirements and resignations at the last minute that we were not anticipating, which changed some pieces. So we, we would appreciate the time of sitting down and showing you how we move people from central office back into the schools, and what, how that worked out. So, in the next meeting or so, we'd be happy to do that.
Okay, thank you.
I, 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 I don't know how we can wait for another meeting. This, as I was listening to Ms. Semple speak, you know, I, I was looking for the words myself when, before this meeting, and, and she, she came up with ones that were more polite that I was going to use, and she said that she felt deceived and misled. And I guess I'll borrow those words too. Because I, there are profound changes compared to what we had discussed. I mean, deep, deep, profound changes. And it wasn't vetted at all by the school committee, at all. Ms. Bakayaki, did you, did you know anything about this?
No.
Yeah, so, none of us?
No, but I will say, Mike, you know as well as I do that as a member of the school committee, that is not our decision to make. That is a superintendent's decision to make.
We approved the budget, she sold the budget a certain way, and it, because it was bait and switch. We got something totally different.
And then we changed the grade configuration, and it's not totally different. I, I was looking at it right before the meet, it's not totally different. And again, we changed the grade configuration after, after the budget vote.
To, to borrow Ms. Semple's frustration, this was a long process, and we were hand-in-hand the whole way, and I, I, I was trying to buy into it, and I'm like, you know, trying to keep mine open, how we got to do this? It was all about class sizes, right? So, so I swallowed the bitter pill, and I said, okay, I can live with this, because I can see some silver linings. I see these deans and all the savings we're going to have from them, because we're not going to do the assist, as many assistant principals. And, and the deans do discipline, which is going to, which is going to be useful in, in, I hope, in, in, uh, addressing the bullying and the discipline issues. But, but all that went out the window, all of it. It's, I, I don't know what the... I feel, I feel that, how can I put this? This is more than a step backwards. I mean, this was, I was actually looking forward to this. I went to that third and fourth grade orientation, and it was like, this is, the positivity was so good, and I, I wish I remembered the lady's name, and she was saying that, you know, we gotta, you know, we gotta, you know, stop, you know, with the negative, and we gotta just look forward. And, and, and I was like, I was all on board, and then I, and then, and then this got dropped on me, and I'm like, I don't, I've got little confidence that this is better than what we had, what we already, already discussed and agreed upon. And, and I'm terribly disappointed. And, and I, I'm at a loss for words because I don't understand it, and now we're going to wait for another meeting, so, some other time, to, to learn what the hell it really means.
I'm not really sure what you mean by that, Mr. Flaherty, because what that does is it takes away the deans in the middle level. It puts back the APs who will be doing discipline. Full-time.
The slide I got today said proposed structure.
Yes.
So, yet, we were supposed to save a principal with this move, and now, now somehow, the middle school's going to have two principals.
Well, you're going to have a building of 900 and some students.
We knew that.
They're going to be on different schedules. So if you want a supervisor as the principal to stay from 7:20 in the morning till 4:something, you have to have coverage. We did not add, we added a interim principal who came up from an AP. We had two people at the central office who would be doing curriculum and oversight. Those people came out of central office, and that was in the proposal the whole time. They came out of central office and came back into the building.
Who was that? I'm sorry, who, who came out of central office?
We had two slots that would be curriculum, that would do evaluation and supervision.
Oh, oh, that's right, okay. I see.
Those are gone.
The ones that didn't exist.
They were new.
They didn't exist.
They didn't exist. Because of the number of evaluations that were required to do, a principal and an AP can simply not get them done. And so there had to be administrative oversight. By doing this configuration, it puts the person back in the building.
The whole discussion on why we needed to close mine it was because if we kept mine it open, we'd have to, we couldn't, we couldn't, you know, remove the administrative positions, and yet now we're adding principals and not doing the deans, and it's, 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 I don't even recognize it.
And when you have deans, they teach half-time.
We knew that. That was, that was all proposed.
That's right. But by taking, putting the deans back in the classroom, you lower class sizes, which is our goal.
And I thought that was already covered with the original plan.
We've lowered class sizes even more by having the deans back in at the middle level.
And what's going, is there a curriculum supervisor or a special ed? So we're not, we're not doing that?
Special ed? For which area?
It's just, it's on its own over here, special ed.
Yes, there are special ed supervis, there is special ed.
But that was an added position.
No. It was an out-of-district position that was in the budget.
Okay.
But is that, that's not full-time though, isn't that?
No, it's half-time.
All right. And I, I just want to add in, I understand the frustration that Ms. Semple has, and as well as Mr. Flaherty, in that I, I too had the same frustration, that it wasn't, I mean, we were given a different plan, and then all of a sudden, it changed. And, and I'm pretty certain, and I, and you know, maybe it's just hearsay, but I think the APs were told also that they weren't going to be APs anymore. So it's frustrating.
The APs were told that things may change. May. They were not told they did not have positions.
Okay.
So, given the time till the next meeting, you would, if, as, as you mentioned, you would be, um, happy to kind of go into detail, because this, these sounds like details that kind of help us understand, and I think help, help, help the public understand why the changes had to be made.
We'd be very happy to. We need to get past a few dates, um, and because of the configuration, the vote that you made, the reduction in staff is greatly lowered. And because of some recent resignations, it's even lower than what we anticipated, and we've been able to save jobs, which is one of our goals, keeping teachers in front of students.
And at the end of the day, that was the reason I, I even stated that, uh, the only reason that I would vote for closing mine it was to save jobs in our community and to keep the class sizes down. So while, you know, I share the frustration that this looks a little different, I look forward to hearing you talk about the changes and helping us understand, um, the different structure.
I appreciate that. And the other piece is the staff needed to know who their administrators are as we begin the planning. We're, our backs are against the wall now, and we need all hands on deck to get ready for the fall. And that's why I made the decision to share the information with you, and then I shared it with the various buildings.
Thank you. Could I have a motion to adjourn?
Oh, more?
Go ahead.
Just reflecting back on the approval of the minutes from, uh, April 25th, um, where we had discussed, you know, bringing up public comment at, not the next meeting, but the meeting after, that would be our next meeting. Would that be on the agenda for our next meeting?
I don't remember that we said that we would have it at the next meeting. But since that meeting, um, I have spoken individually to the members about how to address that, and, uh, if you'd like... So, what I proposed, and I proposed it to you, and I proposed it to all the members, was to have a special meeting in the summer to discuss that subject, to have the Massachusetts Association of School Committee come to our meeting and help us, help us develop a policy that would include more public participation in the meetings. And so that's what I was hoping to be able to do, if all the members are in favor of that.
It still pushes it out to what, October, September?
I mean, we have no meeting in July.
Right.
I actually spoke to, um, the Massachusetts Association today, and they would be happy to come and do that at any time during June or July, whenever it's convenient for all of us. And so that's what I was hoping to have happen.
How did the other members feel about it?
Um, they were all in favor of it.
All of them?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay.
So I will, um, I will stay in touch, and over the next week or so, come up with a date around everyone's plans in July, of when that would work best. Okay, thank you. Is there anything else? Could I have a motion to adjourn? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.